Opening this community input session for the 2017-18 budget. Any public speakers out there like to speak on behalf of anything themselves or the budget? Anybody out there like to speak on behalf of the budget? Nope. Okay. We'll close that part of the session then. Okay, we'll begin the regular scheduled meeting now. We'll call the beginning order. Emily McComber, would you come up and give us the Pledge of Allegiance?
I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Read certification of the closed meeting, please.
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of December 10, 2015 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
So move. Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
If public speakers on the agenda topics, Ms. Gingerelman, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Whitney, Dr. Durantsky, and the school board members for allowing me this opportunity tonight. The family of Maya Cross would like to publicly share a few words about Dr. Jolene Neighbors, the choral and drama director at Nansen River High School. Maya is a junior at Nansen River, was born without the use of a spoken language, and continues to be challenged in her educational process. From Maya's earliest months, music was a stabilizing factor in her life. Dr. Neighbors has allowed, encouraged, and welcomed Maya to be a part of the musical world, along with many other special needs students. Maya is in her third year in Dr. Neighbors' choral class, and it's absolutely amazing to watch her through music, the encouragement and the acceptance. You see, because Dr. Neighbors has accepted Maya into her fold, and because Dr. Neighbors has instilled a family atmosphere in her classroom, Maya's second favorite and very important part of her life is being a part, being accepted. Maya has blossomed under Dr. Neighbors. As Maya arrived at school the other day, a young lady came up to her and said, "Come on, Maya, let's go to class." And Maya turned around, looked at me with a big wave, and took off just with this beaming look on her face. And those kind of things mean so much to us as her family. Dr. Neighbors also has her in her drama class, another class normally reserved for those who communicate verbally. Maya's first year at Nansen River, she was a flower in Alice in Wonderland; and her second year, she was a dancing princess in Cinderella. And through all of this, the choral and drama students have taken Maya along on their journey, students like Nico, Emily, Henry, Savannah, and these young ladies here tonight, and so many more. I've watched Maya literally sing for Dr. Neighbors and talk for Dr. Neighbors. She inspires Maya to be the very best that she can be. Maya's mother and stepfather both are firefighters and paramedics with our city, and they are unable to be here tonight because they're on duty. They, along with Maya's grandfather, her siblings, and extended family, are grateful for Maya's opportunities at Nansen River High School. We really can't say enough about that school. A school climate is a direct reflection of leadership. Our hats are off to Mr. Macklemore and his staff. We feel blessed to be a part of Nansen River High School, and we thank you, Dr. Neighbors, for believing in Maya.
Good reports by the superintendent.
You can see we start with good news, but I think we just heard our good news. We certainly appreciate Dr. Neighbors and our grandparent that spoke today. Beth Ann Bradshaw is going to start off with our good news report. Ms. Bradshaw.
Each month, we take this opportunity to share with you and our audience at home some of the exciting things that happen in our schools each and every day, and some of the outstanding accomplishments of both our students and our staff. Tonight, we have a presentation from some of the top student vocalists at Nansen River High School to share some holiday cheer under the direction of Dr. Jolene Neighbors.
(Singing) Have yourself a merry little Christmas. Let your heart be light. From now on, our troubles will be out of sight. Ooh. Have yourself a merry little Christmas. Make the yuletide gay. From now on, our troubles will be miles away. Here we are as in olden days, happy golden days of yore. Faithful friends who are dear to us, gathered near to us once more. Through the years, we all will be together in the fates of love. May your shining star above the highest bow. And have yourself a merry little Christmas now. Here we are as in olden days, happy golden days of yore. Faithful friends who are dear to us, gathered near to us once more. Through the years, we all will be together in the fates of love. May your shining star above the highest bow. And have yourself a merry little Christmas now. Merry Christmas now. (Singing) I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, just like the ones I used to know. Where the tree tops listen and children listen to hear sleigh bells in the snow. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas. Merry Christmas, corn on high. May your days be merry, so bright. Merry and bright. And may all your Christmases be white. May your days be merry and bright. And may all your Christmases be white. For child is this who lays to rest on Mary's lap is sleeping. Whom angels greet with anthems sweet, while shepherds watch our keeping. This, this is Christ the King, whom shepherds guard and angels sing. Haste, haste to bring him light, the babe, the son of Mary. Why lies he in such meanness, where rocks and dust are feeding? Good Christian fear for sinners here, the silent word is bleeding. This, this is Christ the King, whom shepherds guard and angels sing. Haste, haste to bring him light, the babe, the son of Mary. So bring him instant's golden mirth, come peasant king to own him. The King of kings salvation brings, let loving hearts enthrone him. This, this is Christ the King, whom shepherds guard and angels sing. Haste, haste to bring him light, the babe, the son of Mary. For child is this who lays to rest on Mary's lap is sleeping. Whom angels greet with anthems sweet, while shepherds watch our keeping. This, this is Christ the King, whom shepherds guard and angels sing. Haste, haste to bring him light, the babe, the son of Mary. Haste, haste to bring him light, the babe, the son of Mary. (Singing) Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Sing more, sing. One more, say one more. Okay, one more. Merry Christmas. Say Merry Christmas.
All right.
Say it louder. Merry Christmas. No. Say it louder. Merry Christmas. Say it louder. All right.
Mrs. Neighbors, we certainly appreciate you coming out today, always entertaining. If you're not in the spirit, you certainly are now. Ladies, thank you very much. Excellent job.
Excellent.
I'm sorry, that's Dr. Neighbors. I apologize.
Before we continue, we'll give the choir a chance to leave.
I'd like to say something.
Sure.
I think this is a prime example of how Suffolk Public Schools, Dr. Neighbors especially, we teach a lot of life lessons out here, and it's all about, this is what education is truly about. You learn a lot more from these things sometimes than you do from SOL test scores and all of this. We are, you know, we are providing that extra thing, and we thank Dr. Neighbors. She teaches music and drama very well, but these life lessons are so important.
Absolutely. Excellent.
It will continue.
Thank you.
Good news.
Thank you, Dr. Neighbors. Thank you.
Next you can see on our agenda is the student-teacher ratios. If you'll turn to the very next page, well, actually, it's on page three, you'll see each year we provide you the student-teacher ratio by building. We do have some areas that we're concerned about, specifically in our fourth and fifth grade and some of our high school classes. As I've shared with you, we're in the preliminary stages of developing our budget. Class size is certainly going to be an area that we hope to address by adding a few additional teachers to decrease the class sizes in those areas that are somewhat, I think, overpopulated. But if you have any questions regarding those numbers, by all means, I can try and answer them.
What is our optimum student-teacher ratio per class size?
Overall, within the division, I think it's 23 to 1, but of course, it varies. That's an average. It varies from building to building. We, as you well know, participate in the K3 initiative, where we receive additional funding to provide a lower student-teacher ratio on those schools, depending on the income of that school or the socioeconomic status of the particular schools on the elementary level.
Have we been able to see one that stands out especially that we've talked about? Have we been able to get any support?
We have. And in some instances, when we see that a class is overpopulated or larger than we like for it to be, sometimes we'll add an additional teacher assistant to provide some instructional support for the classroom teacher. The third item on the reports by superintendent is the Affordable Healthcare Act, and if you turn to page 23, you can see there's a memo to you from me regarding recommended changes in reference to the health benefit plan. And I'll call to the podium Ms. Wendy Forsman, just in case you have any questions regarding that, or perhaps, Ms. Forsman, if you don't mind, just highlighting those changes.
Certainly. In January, we will be required by the Affordable Healthcare Act to produce what we call a healthcare W-2 for each employee. That W-2 has to include every dependent that is covered under the health insurance for each employee, has to have their date of birth, their social security number, what month they were covered, if they were covered all year, if there's a safe harbor, there's like 20 different codes that we have to use if they've had changes to their health and benefits during the year. I'm sorry. So there's some changes that are going to need to come along so that we can bring our business practice into align with the way that we're now going to have to report this information out. So if you turn to page 24, there are a couple of recommendations, three recommendations. First of all, our plan year for health benefits goes from October 1st through September 30th each year currently. We will have to change that to a calendar year plan in order to report the information the way the IRS is requiring us to report it. So what we're suggesting is that we hold an open enrollment in May of 2016 for the October, November, and December 2016 plan year as a short plan year, and then hold a second open enrollment in August of 2016 for the January through December 2017 new plan year, and have it start in January of 2017. So the plan year would become a calendar year, just like we have to report to the IRS. The second thing would be that currently, when you come on as an employee, you pay in September for October's health insurance, and in October, you pay for November's, which is a month in advance. However, with the new reporting, the way that they're pulling the information out of the software is on a month-to-month basis. So for instance, if you come in in September and you pay for October, it looks as if you don't have health insurance because you're paying in advance. And consequently, when you leave, if it's mid-year, there's consequences on the other side as well. So we're going to have to go to a system where you pay as you go. The month that you're paying for is the month that you're covered. So in September, you would be covered for September; in October, you would be covered for October. So that would produce a holiday, and I use that term very lightly because most of our employees have paid at June 30th, have paid through September for their health insurance. If we go to a month-to-month, they would not pay health insurance premiums in September of 2016. They would start October 2016 because they would be covered for October. So I don't want to call it a holiday, but it really is a holiday. They wouldn't have it coming out of their check that month. So that's the second thing. The third thing would be that we have deductions for 12 months. Currently, we have the deduction for 10 months. Again, with the way the software pulls it out, it's looking to see, did it come out each month? And if you show a month that it didn't come out, like July and August and September, it looks as if you're not covered under the health insurance. So unfortunately, it's going to mean we're going to have to go a 12-month deduction. The only exception to this would be teachers who choose 10-month pay. If they choose 10-month pay, we cannot force them to do 12-month deductions. So we would have to manually do their deduction, their health insurance for the summer months. And there's only 44 of those currently, so that's not too many. But so those are the three major changes. So one would be going to a calendar plan year, January through December, pay as you go, so it'd be each month you would be paying for that month, and then pay for 12 months. So the deduction would go from a 10-month deduction to a 12-month deduction.
Forsman, this is for next year, is that correct?
It would begin in, it would begin next year, we would have two enrollment periods next year. We'd have a short plan year of October through December, and then really officially begin January of '17.
Okay. When does the required Cadillac tax hit?
2018.
2018, so we don't have to worry about that for this year?
No, sir.
Okay.
And you'll note that down on the bottom of page 24, there is a communication plan to make sure that all employees are well aware.
Any questions, Ms. Forsman? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
The next item, number four, is a few months ago, we had some discussion about exploring outsourcing, privatizing transportation services. We began to do some research, and then we saw there was some research that had already been done from the Virginia School Board Association, your association. On page 25, what we have here are kind of a, well, it's not a meta-analysis, but it's a matter of about five different research articles, in some cases, or sites, that is across the country where outsourcing of transportation has taken place. But I will bring your attention to the summary paragraph where it talks about, for school leaders examining privatizing transportation services, it's recommended that the resources are reviewed carefully, but also to keep in mind that there oftentimes vendors will say it will cost or save money, and that's not always the case. In fact, when you read some of these, and I've read most of them, not as thoroughly as I would hope to, you'll see that it's not something that I would recommend at this point as far as moving in that direction for our school division. But if you'd like us to continue to explore, or you want to look at this, or if you have questions, we'll try and answer those.
Questions by board members?
Has anybody talked to Roanoke City, since it's the only district in the state that has outsourced their transportation?
I have not, no, no. But we can do that as far as next steps.
I think, you know, it would be worth someone talking to them, and also probably to Mountain Valley Transportation that provides their transportation. I had an opportunity to speak with them at the School Board Association Convention. They were one of the vendors present, and their home company is out of Pennsylvania, and they provide transportation throughout the nation. But it may be good for someone to just talk with those two people.
What is the size of that school system? Did you?
Roanoke City?
Yes.
No, I do not know the size.
Right. I mean, I guess it would be important to know the size of the school system and the distance that they would cover, whether it would be comparable.
They are one of the districts that, when we look at comparable school divisions, size-wise, they're comparable. I think they're a little smaller, but you're exactly right, as far as the landmass, we do need to be mindful of that. But we certainly can follow up with having some conversation with them.
Thank you, sir.
And of course, the last item, as far as the superintendent's report, is the calendar of special events, and that is located on page 28. Of course, winter break begins at the end of the day, December 18th, and we will reopen on January 4th. We also will be celebrating Custodial Workers Appreciation Day on January 6th when we return, and of course, Martin Luther King Holiday, Monday, January 18th. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
I'd like to ask our board members to refer to the consent agenda at this time, see if any items need to be moved from that to new business. If not, can we entertain a motion?
I move the consent agenda.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
unfinished business. This is required, but...
Yes, this is an action item. You may recall that we presented to you the academic integrity policy. This is the second reading, and we're asking for adoption as well. Are we certainly able to answer any questions, if you have any?
Have questions for the academic policy, concerning the academic policy?
I make a motion that we accept ordinance number 15/16-2.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
For the new business, please. Election of pro temp school board chairman and clerk for the purpose of executing checks through January 31st, 2016. Need a motion?
I move that Dr. Nebraska and Mrs. Neighbors would continue to fill this void between through January 31st, 2016.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Scheduling of 2016 school board organizational meeting for 4:30 PM, Thursday, January 14th, 2016.
I move that we schedule an organizational meeting for 4:30, Thursday, January 14th.
If board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Ordinance 15/16-3, distribution rights, communication materials, communications materials, first reading and adoption.
I move that the scheduling of a joint work meeting with the Suffolk City Council for Wednesday, February 3rd, 2016, time to be determined.
Board members will please vote.
Before we move to the...
Motion carried.
Before we move to the fourth one, I do have Ms. Beth Ann Bradshaw to share a brief presentation regarding this one. All right, why don't you?
Waller, maybe you can explain the policy pieces. I was going to talk about the e-flayer specifically.
Okay, okay.
There is policy in your packet regarding distribution of communication and materials, and what we are seeking to do by this policy is to allow information to be presented to parents and to the general public by way of electronic communications, in addition to what we currently do, which is stack and post, which is to allow people to actually get hard copies of materials. And so what this policy pretty much does is that it spells out what can be delivered electronically and what is not allowed to be delivered electronically. And so the policy covers all of those different aspects, and I think that Ms. Beth Ann Bradshaw, when she goes through her presentation, she will outline for you more specifically exactly what will be covered in this policy.
Mr. Waller, did you say that these materials would go out electronically... Mr. Waller, did you say that, that these materials would go out electronically and hard, hard copy?
We will continue to be able to have some materials available to people through the, through the all format.
But that doesn't mean that when you send something electronically, that you have to also send a hard copy?
No, no.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clear.
It will not be duplicating.
Good, okay.
Materials.
Okay, only if requested or something?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, as part of Suffolk Public Schools' efforts to be environmentally friendly, to maintain fiscal responsibility, and to embrace innovative technology, but most importantly, to reach more families, we're excited to start offering with the change in this policy, what, um, offering parents in the community what could be called an electronic backpack. Um, no more lost forms in the bottom of the backpack, no balled-up things that never make it home with the permission forms. Um, we hope to be going paperless and hopefully reaching more parents with information about events and activities that could help their children. About two weeks ago, we started sending school e-flyers directly to parents, and the response has been outstanding. Um, our schools are very excited about it, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about the, the, um, service that we're going to be using for this. It's called Peachjar. Don't ask me why, probably because it's memorable, um, but we'll hear it called a lot of things, probably. But Peachjar is a, um, company that provides this service. It is an innovative flyer management system that sends school-approved and district-approved e-flyers directly to parents' inboxes through their email, and also posts them online. So now, parents can easily find and view those flyers and take action immediately. There's even connections where you can go right to the flyer and sign up to get to the online registration. The, um, service is free to Suffolk Public Schools, um, and all of the flyers from our schools are PTA, student organizations, and the like are also sent this way for free. The way that the organ, the service, the company makes its, um, you know, provides the, has the funds to provide this is by charging the community organizations that want to post these electronic flyers a small fee for that service. Paper flyers, typically, we've been doing, um, we've, the organization, let's say Parks and Recreation, has a, you know, a Little League event that they want to sign up. We've allowed them to bring a small stack to each school, um, have them in the school office if someone happens to come by, and put one up maybe on the school, um, office window. Um, and then this way, it'll actually get into everybody's, whoops, virtual hands, I guess, with their email. It'll also be able to show, as you see here on any smart device, which is what so many of our parents these days are, are relying on, um, they can be seen both on smartphones as well as the computers. Um, they can select, parents can select how often they want the flyers to be sent to them from their children's schools. They can also totally opt out of the email notification system and choose to just view them directly online from their school's website. The schools can still distribute paper flyers for their internal school groups, if it's particularly something that, you know, they want to double, make sure that everybody sees and gets as a supplement to this. And for parents without internet access, even those that might not have a smartphone, um, schools can provide those paper flyers on request, or either provide a resource center or a computer perhaps in the office where, um, they can log in and look at them that way. Not sure why the screen just went black. Anyway, we will continue. Um, only school district and approved flyers are posted and distributed, just like before, any school flyer that went home in paper with a child to get, take home to their family had to be approved by the principal. So, those would be PTA flyers, student organization flyers, and the principals will still continue to approve those, and will be authorized to put those onto the e, uh, Peachjar system. All flyers that are from outside organizations will go through the Public Information and Community Relations Office for approval, and in your, um, policy that's before you, there's a list of, um, who will, who's allowed and what is not definitely going to be allowed to be distributed this way. And all those outside organization flyers will have to have a disclaimer, um, printed on them that the activities or services, um, that Suffolk Public Schools is just providing the distribution as a service to families to know more about the community, that things that might help their families, but that it's not being sponsored or endorsed, um, by Suffolk Public Schools. So, community organizations, um, I've talked to a couple already. Peachjar works with them directly on the fees and the structure for that, but I know that Parks and Recreation and the YMCA have already talked with, one-on-one, to explain it to them, and they're very excited about it. Um, they know that, um, you know, when you have a stack of flyers, or even when you're able to distribute them to every child, it doesn't get to where it needs to be, that parents are going to be looking at their smartphones, you know, at the stoplight and see them much more often than trying to remember to look in their child's backpack. So, they're excited, and, you know, typically, the service fee is going to be less than making, you know, a thousand copies for, or a copy for every child, so they're excited about it. And then, there's the guarantee that it will get into a parent's hand, or not a guarantee, but if they opened their email that they would see it. So, they're excited about that, and one of the things they're most excited about is that whole, um, you can sign up now, you can see the flyer, and there's a link that you can put right to, let's say, Parks and Recreation's online registration system to, right then and there, go ahead and register for an event. And there's also, of course, social media is a big thing. There's the opportunity for any parent or out, you know, anybody can register to look at these flyers, to share it with their friends and families through social media. Um, I could show you some examples, but I think you can probably look or make, um, on your own from our website, and one of the green buttons on the side is called, um, Peachjar e-flyers, and there you'll see the, um, guidelines that are for outside organizations, which will follow this policy about what can and cannot be, um, shared and how it'll go through the approval process. But some of the schools, particularly elementary schools, have already really taken advantage of this, and one of the things you'll see is some, um, you know, they can have full-color flyers, they can be, you could have the principal's newsletter that's up there, that can be multiple pages. It's going to save the schools a lot of copying costs, and I think really make families, you know, notice and, and see these things on a regular basis. Starting tomorrow, when it actually, once you approve the policy, starting tomorrow, um, you know, anybody can go to just peachjar.com and sign up for, um, once they activate our, our account, um, sign up to get these kind of emails from any and all schools. Parents have already been sent an email that introduced it to them and had the connections with the schools that their own children are going to. But others, you know, the babysitter can sign up and get flyers, and grandma, and, and anybody else in the community that's interested. So, that kind of is every view of it. Do you have any questions about, about it at this point?
Does the school system reserve the right to ban any of these, uh, flyers?
We, we have an approval process. There's a longer list of things that won't be allowed and, um, than it is that will be allowed. There's, um, you know, it's, uh, city of Suffolk organizations, the state organizations, federal organizations, but things that would, I don't have it in front of me.
Article seven before you, special interest materials, kind of speaks to that.
Those that would be of benefit to families and support our education, um, mission and or provide, uh, wellness and health activities for families.
Um, is, it would be interesting to discover, uh, what the school system will be saving on paper copy machines, and, I mean, that's, those are very expensive to maintain a copy machine.
Certainly is, and, and we should be able to have an approximate savings as far as from one year to the next.
Yeah.
I have a question. Do we have any idea of how many of our parents have provided an email address for us?
Um, it's one of the, it's always been an optional, but this year, they've, they've asked to put it in, so, um, maybe about two-thirds. You know, if they have, you know, most of them, if they have, are using the Home Access Center with the online grade book, would have it. But even if they haven't provided it to us, they can go on individually, you know, and register, sign in themselves with a different, you know, email address, and then you could get it at your work and your home, and even if it hadn't actually been provided to.
Do you have any idea of how many of our parents don't have access? Because some of the same parents who don't have access may not be the ones who come to school who can sit at a computer and check for us. So, my question would be, what, what, what have we done to make sure that those folks get the same information that everybody else does?
Definitely anything that would have normally been given to every child to take home. The principal have to be, um, aware of perhaps those that, that might need that extra, and they have the option to continue to do both, um, until maybe that it's, you know, it's more, you know, accepted, or that more, people get more used to looking at it online, as a smartphone.
Bradshaw, on tomorrow, if we approve this, will, uh, a person who's seeking to, uh, advertise, will there be a fee up there as to how much you would pay for a certain information?
Um, I, Peachjar actually handles that interaction. Um, so they would, they could go on, online and through our registration, ask that this flyer be put on, and they're, come up how much it would cost in their own little shopping cart. Um, so, it, it varies, and it's, it's, I tried, I, I don't even balance my checkbook, and I can't even buy twenty ten-cent stamps with figuring out how much it costs, so I'm glad they're handling that part. I'm excited about the, the communication part. So, if you do have any organizations that you know would be interested in using this service, let them know to contact me, um, and then we can see they can get in touch. All the organizations that have been approved in the past two years to have, um, to, just outside community organizations to have post and stack in our schools have been contacted if we had their current contact address to let them know the system was, was happening and what process they would need to be taking. And we, the, the plan is, we will no longer let those outside organizations do the paper copies. They'll be required to do it this way, and I think they'll be happy, I think they'll still reach a lot more people than they were with the post and stack.
This is an action item. Can we get a recommendation for approval?
I move that, uh, we adopt ordinance number fifteen slash sixteen dash three, distribution of outside communications and materials.
Second. Board members will please vote.
Ordinance number fifteen sixteen slash four, special interest materials, first reading and adoption.
I move that we adopt ordinance fifteen sixteen dash four.
Second. Board members will please vote.
As speakers on our agenda items, Mr. Hunter Turley.
Hi, my name is Hunter Turley, and I'm a sophomore at Lakeland High School, and I am here today as a member of Y Street.
Now, speak into the microphones, we, pull it up to your face.
Y Street is a youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth that focuses on promoting healthy living in Virginia. That's where the 24/7 campaign comes in, helping Virginia schools be tobacco-free 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We're starting by working for a hundred percent comprehensive tobacco-free school policies. If you want to see the, the four things that are a hundred percent comprehensive tobacco-free school policy must have, you can see the info card that we have provided for you in your folder. The main idea is that tobacco products or electronic cigarettes are not being used by anyone, including staff and visitors, anywhere, including off-site school events at any time. I met with my principal, Mr. Wagner, at Lakeland High School to talk about how we can partner with him on the 24/7 campaign. I'm proud to have a principal who's committed to creating a hundred percent tobacco-free school environment for his students, staff, and visitors. The Suffolk Public School Division is doing a great job to commit to healthy students, staff, and visitors. I am here today asking that you update your tobacco policy so it is clearly a hundred percent comprehensive. We provided a copy of your current tobacco-free policy. It is a strong policy. It only needs a very small update to make it a hundred percent comprehensive. First, the policy specifies many places where tobacco and e-cigarettes are prohibited, but there are potential gray areas that does not, that is not covered. In order to close any loopholes in this language, we propose that language be updated to move designated smoking areas, include any school-sponsored or school-related events, whether on or off-site, and require consequences for visitors. Secondly, I'm asking that you update your policy to prohibit the possession of tobacco and e-cigarettes. Lastly, I'm asking that you update your policy to prohibit the use of electronic cigarettes on school property. In two thousand and fourteen, the General Assembly of Virginia mandated that all tobacco policies for Virginia public schools be updated to include electronic cigarettes. A copy of this amendment is in your packet. As a partner and resource to Suffolk Public Schools, I am here to offer, uh, to update your tobacco policies in order to make it clear and easy to understand. In your folder is a model policy language that you are free to adopt that can be used to ensure your, our division is a hundred percent tobacco-free. Once you decide to adopt a new policy, we have great ways to show our support. First, we provide our free tobacco-free signage to all schools in your division. Second, we will offer our free tobacco-free toolkit to all schools in your division. A copy of this toolkit has been provided to the board chair. Third, we will add you to our map of a hundred percent comprehensive division on our handout and website. On behalf of Y Street, I thank you for taking the time to speak with us, and we hope you will join us by adopting a hundred percent comprehensive tobacco-free division policy.
Thank you, Hunter. Any questions? We certainly appreciate you coming up here and giving us this information. Dr. Winnie, could you look into this and present it for the...
We certainly will. Our people personnel, um, people personnel department will be more than happy to kind of review the suggestions and see where we might need to update.
All right, thank you very much. This time, we'll take, uh, comments by board members, business by board members. Biscuit, or you'll be first today.
I have no business tonight. I just wish you a happy and safe holiday.
Thank you. Hi, yes, I'd like to thank everyone for helping me, uh, continue my education as a new board member. I attended the Virginia School Board Association Convention in Williamsburg, and, uh, it was quite educational, and, and, uh, I really gained a lot of knowledge there. I'd like to, uh, call everyone's attention to the Hour of Code that's going on this week at Driver Elementary School. I'd like to thank Mary Rogers, the gifted, uh, resource teacher, who put this together where every child in kindergarten through fifth grade is learning how to do code and write code, um, through the use of a computer program. And, uh, Driver's the only elementary school in Suffolk that is, uh, part of this, and it was amazing to see the students, um, use the icons to write the code and, and, uh, to make their figures jump from one level to another. It was, it was amazing what Ms. Rogers was able to do, and she's reaching every student in the school this week. This is an international program. Um, I attended the, uh, academic awards program at Nazm River High School last evening. The other two high schools had their programs back in November, and, uh, Nazm River was playing catch-up, and it was very well-attended, and a lot of students were recognized. As your representative of the Suffolk Education Foundation, it's my pleasure at this time to recognize our new executive director who's with us tonight, Ms. Renata Banks, uh, executive director for the Suffolk Education. Thank you for coming out this evening, Renata, and I'd also like to wish all of our constituents a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy Kwanzaa. Thank you.
I'd just like to say again, thank you for the job that you do, the job that you've done in twenty-fifteen, and the job that I'm looking forward to you doing in twenty-sixteen. Uh, we all attended the, uh, school boards, the Virginia School Boards Association meeting. I felt very affirmed. Sometimes we feel uncomfortable with, uh, certain things that we do in our bus schedules. Uh, Dr. Winnie and I attended a meeting with regard to bus schedules, and we looked at a, a process another, uh, very large school system went through to come to the same conclusions we did. So, I... So I felt very comfortable with what we're doing, and just keep on doing a great job. Have a wonderful holiday.
Also attended the V SBA Conference Convention. They did have some excellent workshops. I think I brought some ideas back that I'd like to share later, maybe with the superintendent. Couple of other things, I want to commend, I'll meet and greet with the legislators that we had recently at Kilby Shores. I thought that was a wonderful afternoon, well-spent. Delicate Chris Jones and Senator John Cosgrove attended, and we had an excellent conversation and meeting about the needs of our state in public education and also concerns that we have here in Suffolk about public education and things that would help us immensely in our locality. We toured the school, and it was an excellent tour. I think they got a firsthand interpretation of what we're doing in the classrooms, got to see the children in action. It was a very good afternoon. I believe Mr. Copeland and Mr. Mitnick and I thoroughly enjoyed that and the conversation with our legislative group. I want to thank Ms. Moody and her staff for an excellent time at Kilby Shores. And just this past Tuesday, I attended Pioneer's PTA Holiday Program, which was excellent, and I want to commend their staff and students on a wonderful program for the holidays to get us all in the spirit. And Dr. Belton and her staff are to be commended as well as the students.
I'd like to thank Amy Mansabias, I hope I pronounced that right, our new IB Coordinator, for inviting me to their presentation of some very talented students' extended essays today on the subject of mathematics, which was probability and statistics, which I had a very difficult time understanding, but I did my best, and psychology and biology. And in the biology division, one of the students tested her three cats to see the effect of brushing their teeth, how that would eliminate the bacteria in the mouths of a cat, which I found to be extraordinary because I can not even imagine putting my hands in the mouth of one cat, much less three. Also, in the area of visual arts, one of the students presented the artwork of Diego Rivera and in history, the student talked about the Hitler Youth, which I told her was absolutely terrifying, how you can change the mind of an entire nation the way they did. And in the subject of psychology, one of the students talked about what it means to be a firstborn, secondborn, or thirdborn child, birth order. It was really fascinating. And once again, and thank you, Dr. Lee, for allowing me to attend this.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mrs. Barham and I basically have the same concerns with Whoville and Holland area. So what she has attended, I basically attended as well with the legislators. That was very impressive. I'd like to commend our superintendent for inviting Delegate Jones and Cosgrove, Senator, for coming. Since Delegate Jones alluded to some of the things that he and I witnessed on city council in the past, and so I had to get him straight to some of those things that I witnessed on council got me in trouble, it didn't get him in trouble. But anyway, we enjoyed it, and I think that we accomplished quite a bit. And so thank you, my superintendent, for having legislators coming to Kilby Shores. And Kilby Shores was a wonderful school, and the students were just magnificent. I mean, they were real ideal, and everybody was up to par, and we were very proud of them, to be honest with you. So in the meantime, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, because personally, this is my time of year. I love Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. I attended the meeting here yesterday on green spaces, and it was mighty interesting. I'd like to tell you a little bit about what we're talking about. The people who presented the information said the number-one problem here in this area is runoff water from storm, storm damaging, storm and storm damage, especially in the Nazman River. And their biggest concern was we don't have enough trees to suck up this storm water when it rains. And it was interesting to hear some of the solutions to this problem. I would encourage anybody here on the school border, in the schools, to take up the fight for a green space in our parks, in our new schools, maybe even, and plant a tree for whoever you can. That's all I have at this time. I'd like the board members to refer to informational items, see if they have any questions concerning the informational items in the board packet. Questions? Mr. Copeland, if you would.
Mr. Chair, I move that the personnel report be approved.
Second. Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Mr. Copeland, if you would, you have a comment on the personnel report.
Mr. Chair, I move that the pupil personnel report be approved.
Second. Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Dr. Whitney, do you have a comment on the personnel report?
Yes, I do. With the personnel report, we did have in that our new Director of Special Education, I'd like to congratulate, Ms. Diane Glover. If you would stand, please. Mrs. Glover is currently Supervisor of Special Education with our school division, and she's worked in the capacity as a teacher, educational compliance specialist, as well as data specialist for special education. We look forward to working directly with her. She's worked closely already with CAC, and I'm sure that relationship will continue to flourish. So congratulations, and we welcome you in this position.
Thank you. I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Myself, and this meeting is adjourned, everybody be safe going home today. Thank you.